Good evening, the October 12, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Marietta Planning Commission is called to order. Commissioner Harlan. Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Lavelle.
Here.
Vice Chair Fisher.
Here.
Chair La Paglia. Let the record reflect, all Commissioners are present with the exception of Chair La Paglia and Commissioner Harlan with an excused absence. Now moving on to elect the Chair for Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now moving forward to select Chair Pro Tem. A call for a motion and second to approve Chair Pro Tem.
Make a motion for Commissioner Lavelle to be Pro Tem Commissioner?
Fisher.
Fisher. You are the...
You're approving me to be Chair Pro Tem?
Ah, gotcha.
For this meeting.
Motion approved. Fisher is Commissioner Pro Tem.
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem.
And I will second that motion for making Commissioner Fisher Chairperson tonight.
You take a roll call?
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Lavelle?
Aye.
Chair Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Three, zero.
I'd like everybody to please write for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner King will lead us in that Pledge of Allegiance.
Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner King. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Secretary?
Seeing none.
I'd like to call for a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? Can we take a vote?
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Lavelle?
Aye.
Chair Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. We'll move into public comments. At this time, we'll take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on a subject pertaining to city business, which does not relate to any item listed on tonight's agenda. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission, or any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes in length. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now moving on to the approval of the minutes. We are looking at approving the minutes of September 14, 2022, Regular Planning Commission Meeting as presented. Madam Secretary, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on the approval of these minutes?
Seeing none.
I'd like to call for a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September 14, 2022.
Make the motion to approve those minutes?
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. May we take a roll, please?
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Lavelle?
Aye.
Chair Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Three, zero.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. And the public hearing on the agenda tonight is Development Plan 2019-1846. Conditional use permit 2019-1847, and minor conditional use permit 2019-1856. Convenience store with gas station, drive-through car wash, ABC, outdoor display, and sales. Are there any members of the Planning Commission that wish to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none, we will move on to the staff presentation for this item. Who is the staff presenting? Mr. Aaron?
Yes, thank you for the introduction, and good evening, Chair Fisher and distinguished members of the Planning Commission. So, the proposal before you this evening is a request for a development plan to construct a fueling canopy station, convenience store, outdoor propane sales, and a car wash. The conditional use permit is to allow for the use of the site as a car wash, and the minor conditional use permit is to allow for outdoor display and sale of propane, and for off-site sales of beer and wine. The project outline in bold black is located at the southwest corner of Clinton Keith and McElwain Road. General plan designation for the site is commercial, and the zoning for the site is regional commercial. The proposed uses on this site are consistent with the commercial general plan designation, as well as the regional commercial zoning. A fueling canopy, convenience store are permitted with the approval of a development plan. It is the car wash and the outdoor display and sale of propane and alcohol sales that are conditionally permitted uses and here before you today. So the site plan shows a general layout of the proposal consisting of a convenience store, car wash, fueling canopy, and outdoor propane storage and sales. Access to the site will be via Clinton Keith Road at the existing signalized intersection of McElwain and Clinton Keith Road. The project will be adding an additional through lane where currently there are only two through lanes, and will maintain the existing bike lane connection. The project will also be installing a dedicated right-turn stacking lane off of Clinton Keith Road. The project architecture creates visual interest to the convenience store building and car wash by incorporating multiple complementary building materials consisting of ledger stone veneer, metal wall trellises for landscaping, wood trellises, glass, and stucco. So varied reflames have been designed into the building to provide further visual interest to the architecture and also to screen any equipment on the building itself. The covered fuel canopy has incorporated design elements of the main structure by using stucco beveled canopy cornice and ledger stone veneer on the fuel canopy itself. A minor conditional use permit, as I stated earlier, is required for the request to have off-site sale of beer and wine. The project has been conditioned to comply with the city's hours for alcohol sales being in the morning until 12:00 midnight. The convenience store floor plan clearly identifies the 10-foot distance separation from the building entrance and the checkout counter where no displays of alcoholic beverages are allowed within these areas. The floor plan also demonstrates compliance with the limitation of no more than 10% of retail floor area devoted to the display sale of alcohol. And additionally, the project has been conditioned to identify no advertising of alcohol on gasoline islands, and no lighted advertising of alcohol on the exterior of the building or within the windows. As part of this project review, the city held a community meeting and noticed residents within 300 feet of the project site. The meeting took place on October 29 of 2019. So this was early on in the process. Upon receiving the application, we wanted to invite the residents for feedback. Topics of concern raised at the meeting were multiple, but in general, noise, traffic, lighting, alcohol sales, potential crime as a result of alcohol sales, potential hazards associated with the fuel tank fumes from gasoline and fuel in general, the car wash noise, propane tank, and fueling station proximity to the existing homes. So staff did take into consideration the comments received, and went to the applicant to make a number of requests for design changes to try and accommodate both the concerns of the residents and trying to have the site plan comply as well. So in terms of noise, I just would like to highlight some of the things that were done to the project to change it from the original proposal. So, the trash enclosure normally needs to be at the back of the site and screened from the street. In this case, we felt it was more important to move it away from the residents as far as possible to minimize any noise associated with trash removal. The loading zone was also purposely placed against the street, again, to avoid the noise of semi-trucks or loading or unloading. The car wash location itself was placed against the street setback along Clinton Keith Road. So it was placed as far as possible on the site from the neighboring residential property line. And lastly, there is a requirement in the city where when a commercial zone abuts a residential zone, there needs to be some sort of separation. And the Development Code calls for both a landscape buffer of at least 15 feet. In this case, they have provided 18 at the narrowest and 22 at the widest. As we move towards the convenience store and fuel station, the buffer gets a little wider. In addition to the landscape buffer, there's a requirement to plant evergreen trees, and they have to be dense at a specific distance from each other. So the applicant understood the requirement and made a little bit more landscape buffer and made the landscape even denser than what our requirement is to further screen the proposal from the existing homes. Now I'd like to touch on lighting. So I just spoke of the landscape buffer, but it's important to point out that that also plays a role in shielding lighting from spilling over to the residential property line, as well as we have a condition of approval, and we also have photometric plans that show that the lighting design for the proposal is going to be zero-foot candles at the property line. The Development Code requires no more than 0.3 to be at the property line, but in this case, we asked the applicant, and the applicant agreed, to design the site so that there is zero light spill at the property line. In regards to alcohol sales, this project was reviewed by the Development Review Committee and specifically by the Police Department. Conditions of approval have been placed on the project to reduce the potential for nuisance or crimes associated with alcohol sales. Regarding fuel hazards, we undertook an initial study, and an air quality greenhouse gas analysis was completed, which included a health risk assessment. And the health risk assessment identified specific setbacks required by state regulators to ensure compliance with state health standards for fueling stations. And lastly, proximity to homes. So the project site building, location, the trash enclosures, the loading zone, fuel canopy, the convenience store, they were all purposely located as far away from the residents as possible while maintaining the minimum required emergency responder access through the site. And if you look as we enter the site off of Clinton Keith and McElwain, you see the in-and-out arrows. There's also a shaded path of travel. That is the fire and emergency services path of travel to access the site in the event of an emergency. So you can see how we requested, and the applicant agreed, to push the entire project as close to the street as possible, you know, to create an even greater buffer than what was originally envisioned. Lastly, the city did receive two requests for continuance of the meeting, and we did provide those to you this evening for your consideration. But lastly, having said that, it is staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission to consider adopting a notice of exemption pursuant to SEQA and to adopt a resolution approving the project Development Plan 2019-1846, Conditional Use Permit 2019-1847, and Minor Conditionally Use Permit 2019-1856, based on the findings that we provided and the conditions of approval, as well as the operation statement. And that concludes my presentation, and I know that the applicant also has a presentation prepared for you. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, would we take the applicant's?
To your discretion, you can ask questions of staff now if you'd like, or you can move on to the applicant's presentation. It's either one.
Move on to the applicant's presentation?
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Fisher, and good evening, honorable members of the Planning Commission. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. My name is Kelly Black, and I, along with Steve Rawlings, will be presenting on behalf of the applicant this evening. I want to first begin by thanking Jarrett and staff for their hard work in making this project better. As indicated, the project was originally submitted to the city back in 2018. It's taken us a while to get here, but that's a good thing. It means that we did our due diligence. It means that we listened to the community, we listened to your staff, and we made changes to the project design as was detailed in the staff presentation. One of the things that I did want to touch on tonight and just highlight a bit are questions concerning the SEQA process for this project. The site is approximately 1 point acres in size. It is located at the southwest corner of Clinton Keith and McElwain. As detailed in the staff report, we are coming to you via a SEQA exemption, specifically the infill development SEQA exemption. This exemption hinges on five separate inquiries. Those five inquiries are, number one, is the project site consistent with the general plan, applicable general plan policies, and the city's zoning code? As you heard from your staff tonight, answers to all of those questions are in the affirmative. The site has long been designated as a commercial site. It is zoned as a commercial site. Fueling stations and convenience stores are permitted by right, according to the zoning code, and as was highlighted in the staff presentation tonight. The second inquiry, is the site within the city limits? No more than five acres and substantially surrounded by urban uses? Again, the answer to all of these is in the affirmative. The site is within the city of Marietta, it is 1.8 acres in size, and it is surrounded on all sides by some form of development. Number three, does the site have any value as habitat for endangered, threatened, or rare species? We must be able to answer that in the negative in order to qualify for this exemption. As has been indicated by staff, we did an initial study, which is not required for an exemption, but we felt it was necessary to go through the process of looking at the site and looking at all the possible issues that could come up. We did have a bio-study done for this site. The site does not contain any habitat. It does not contain any rare or threatened species. Number four, and this is key for our discussion tonight. The project must not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. Again, this is why we did an initial study. We looked at each of those four components. We did a traffic study. We did a noise study. We did an air quality study, and we did a water quality study. All of those studies, the data that they showed, and the information is provided to you in your reports. All of those studies indicated that this project has either no impact or a less-than-significant impact on the environment. Finally, the fifth inquiry, the site must be adequately served by the required utilities and public services. We are adjacent to Clinton Keith Road, a major thoroughfare. We plan to make all of the necessary connections. As you heard from staff, we are going to do our required improvements to Clinton Keith Road to bring it up to the general plan standard that you have in front of you. And so the answer to that is yes. All five inquiries are satisfied. All five inquiries are satisfied, not only because I say so, but because people a lot smarter than me who do this for a living say so. All of our technical studies were reviewed by city staff. They were made better by city staff. And at the end of the day, we have a better project because your city staff made it a better project. For those reasons, I ask that you consider this project and consider voting per staff's recommendations. This point, I will bring up Mr. Rawlings.
Welcome, Mr. Rawlings.
Hey, good evening, Honorable Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Steve Rawlings. My address is 26023 Jefferson Avenue here in Marietta. This evening, I wanted to just expand upon some of the points that Aaron has just made there. And Aaron, you did an exceptional job. I should be able to go pretty quickly. Can we go to the next slide there? I wanted to touch upon, you know, the items that Aaron had indicated were of concern to, you know, the members of the community, as well as the staff. And the first one was, of course, you know, the site design in general. And from the initial site plan that was submitted, we have made numerous modifications. The list before you here is not necessarily every one of those, but those are the major, you know, relocating and removing of certain things that we knew would improve upon the project and not be a nuisance to the community there. Next slide there. In terms of the noise, that's always a big issue, and it's a very fair and valid issue. We did do a comprehensive acoustic study there. There was a couple of things that we did do to the site operationally that I think have gone a long way in helping us achieve the low noise levels, the first of which is that the blowers, which are the dryers, are actually inside the tunnel by about 5 to 10 feet. Also constructed at the end, a big 10-foot by 10-foot wall on the exterior, just as you exit the tunnel. Once again, just to try to attenuate the sounds. In addition to that, we're purchasing and installing like the state-of-the-art blowing system, according to the acoustical engineer who is here tonight, by the way, Mike Dickerson, and he's also well-versed in the other reports. We could have a conversation right next to those. They're extremely quiet, state-of-the-art. In addition to that, we did, as Aaron pointed out, put in some rather dense landscaping along the property line. Once again, that will certainly help dissipate it. And there's some information about the study that we can, you know, discuss in more detail if you wish. This is an illustrative of the landscaping, and I do, you know, want to just focus the attention along the south property line there where we have several dozen trees and some shrubs that we think will do a very good job at attenuating the noise as well as dissipating the light. Next slide. This gives you a better idea of what the trees will look like. The trees will actually be anywhere from 40 to 60 feet tall at maturity. They're rather narrow trees, as you can see, the spacing on them is going to be somewhat close together so that they create a hedge. And then to the left there is the type of shrub that we're going to be putting in. They get about eight feet by about eight feet, I think, six to eight feet. And then the middle picture is actually, this is exactly, this matches what CBS had put in, which is adjacent there. And so we were consistent there, and I think that staff, as well as our landscape architect, felt like this is a really great screening combination there. Next slide. This is just the elevation of the tunnel. We actually reduced the size of the tunnel, and you can see the 10-foot wall that we've noted out. And then if you just kind of go to the right a little bit, about five or 10 feet in is where we're going to have the blowers inside. So there's going to be, you know, anywhere from 15 to 20 feet of wall, you know, before the noise is kind of released toward the south side. Next slide. This is an excerpt out of the acoustic study. I felt like this was a good slide to show you. The numbers that you see, 1 and 2 represent first floor and second floor of the residences. The numbers to the right of that, say, for example, the 3842, 3942, 3337, 3132, represent the decimal levels. City standard is 50 decibels at each of those locations. And as you can see, as you move further away from the car wash tunnel, the numbers do dissipate quite a bit. And this was part of the study. In addition to the noise study, we also performed a light and glare study to, you know, check the impacts of our project. We have implemented, you know, hood shields on all the lights so that we can direct the lights away from the residents there. The buildings in of themselves will actually help screen some of the lights that are coming off of Clinton Keith Road. Clinton Keith Road obviously is generating quite a bit of light in the evening time. And then once again, the trees and shrubs will also go a long ways in dissipating, you know, the light impacts. As Aaron had indicated, at certain points, there are actually no additional lights from our project onto the residents there. I want to also address air quality and the health risks. We did a comprehensive study once again on air quality and health risks, but I wanted to kind of just talk a little bit about that and let you know that, you know, the gas station industry and the dispensing of fuel in California is one of the most highly regulated activities in the state. Obviously, the state of California is one of the most environmentally restrictive states in the nation. We have CARB, California Air Resources Board, which has to certify all the equipment that is used, the dispensing nozzles, hoses, et cetera, et cetera. And furthermore, in Marietta, we are under the jurisdiction of the South Coast Air Quality Management District. It's a large organization, highly restrictive, highly punitive for people that violate and have set the standards higher than what the rest of the state of California is. So I feel very safe in saying that the South Coast Air Quality Management District has the absolute highest standards in the entire country for gas dispensing and vapor recovery. Obviously, we have literally thousands of gas stations in the basin. All of those are highly regulated, and this would fall under the same, you know, jurisdiction and the same rules. So we have a report to back it up, and I will say this again, it's the most regulated, it's one of the most regulated industries in terms of air quality. Next slide. In addition, though, we are installing a vapor sensing system that works 24 hours a day so that we can monitor ourselves, you know, continuously if we are having any kind of vapor release issues. This is a state-of-the-art sensing piece of equipment that will be installed at this location. Next slide. Terms of water quality, obviously, underground storage tanks have, you know, in the past, then, you know, have leaked. But again, I will submit to you that this... But again, I will submit to you that this is once again one of the most highly regulated activities in the state of California. We obviously have the California Water Resources Board. We have the Santa Margarita Basin that monitors these. Modern-day tanks are double-walled. And there is a detection device, censoring device, so that if the first wall does fail or does have a leak, everybody's immediately alerted and the tank actually shuts down, not able to use, so that we can go in and either do a repair to it or actually remove the tank. The state really created a really great agency for monitoring this back in 1993. They give the jurisdiction to the County Department of Environmental Health. And it has proven to be very effective. There simply is not a lot of reported leakage in the gas station industry of tanks. And it's partly because of A, regulation and B, better technology with the tanks. So some of the, you know, sad stories that we've heard from back in the 70s when they, you know, when we were having this problem, just are simply not happening, you know, 60 years, 50, 60 years later. This just gives you a quick little illustrative that, you know, when you're offloading a truck, there's a vapor recovery. Obviously, also when you are filling up a gas, there's vapor recovery. I know quite a bit about this. There are Phase II nozzles, which again, CARB has certified these, that every gas station needs to have. And most cars since early 2000s are equipped with something called an ORVR, which is again, on the car, that helps in vapor recovery. So once again, the standards in the South Coast are the most stringent in the entire country. And we are required to have Phase II handles and other equipment. This next one is talked about the equipment that we use for the sensing device. Again, this is one of the, you know, most advanced systems. And that is part of the system to, again, it's there to help detect any type of leaks. Next slide. The other part of this request, obviously, this evening is for the ability to be able to sell a little beer, some beer and wine from the convenience stores. As Aaron had indicated, we're dedicating a very small percentage of our display area for beer and wine. Marietta Police Department has reviewed this and has provided us with 28 specific conditions of approval that go a long ways toward helping public safety concerns. A couple of things that I would like to highlight there, you know, we're not selling single cans of beer. You have to buy them in, you know, multi-quantity packs. Can't sell fortified, you know, wines or malt products. We have security cameras. And actually, I think the number's higher than what I have put here on the slide. We have a point-of-sale system so that when somebody presents an identification, our cashier has to take a look at it, but it also has to be scanned or the transaction cannot be completed, just as an extra measure there. In addition to that, there is a training requirement. ABC has a program called the Lead Training Program, which is designed for responsible alcohol sales. It focuses very much so on how to identify proper identification checks so that we're not selling to minors who are trying to pass off a bad ID. And the second thing is, is how to clearly identify intoxicated people, you know, checking their eyes and checking their behavior so that we're not, you know, contributing to that. This is about a 30-some-odd-page booklet that all of our employees are given and are reviewed. They're attending a seminar-type of class. And there's actually a clerk's affidavit in here that they have to sign, that they've acknowledged that they have been trained and understand the laws. One other thing that I'd like to tell everybody is that if somebody does, you know, sell to a minor in a sting operation, A, they're immediately terminated. But B, they have their own liability themselves as individuals. This isn't one of those things that says, oh, well, I just got fired and, you know, the company's going to take the hit on their license. No, 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 no. There's individual responsibility that comes with that. You see it much more common in the on-sale with bartenders and so on and so forth. But there is some individual liability with that. We always have at least two employees on-site at all times. Most of the time, we're going to have four or five because of the scale of the operation, which goes a long ways in terms of deterring, you know, potential nuisance behavior. And in addition to that, you know, we do close before midnight. And our coolers automatically lock. Soon as, whoop, just a lock comes down. Can't be opened by any of the employees. So it's just an extra measure of security there. And I think that that really kind of concluded the areas that I wanted to highlight. Again, with me tonight is Mike Dickerson. Mike Dickerson is the one that authored the acoustic studies, the air quality study, and water quality study? Yes, no? Oh, the light glare study as well. And he's obviously here and can address any questions that you may have in terms of the details of that. With that, we appreciate your time and consideration. I think that this applicant has gone beyond, way above and beyond to try to do everything that they can to make sure that this is a quality project and minimize any impacts to the community. And with that, thank you very much.
I didn't get your name. Could I get your name?
It's Steve Rawlings, baseball glove.
Okay. Steve and Kelly, thank you very much for your presentations.
Certainly.
I think they were very detailed, very clear. It looks like a lot of work has been done on the project. What I want to do now is I want to open questions from our commission members to the staff if they have any questions. And then we can, if there are questions needed for the specifics and staff can't answer it, we'll refer to those individuals. So, Mr. Lavelle, Commissioner Lavelle.
Actually, I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner King.
Regarding the landscaping and the trees that are to be installed along the south edge of the property, how tall are they going to be when they're first planted?
So the trees will come in a box size. I'm not sure about the exact height, but they're of a size, they're planted of a size so that when they're in the ground and watered, that they will grow at the fastest rate of growth in comparison to, say, installing a more larger mature tree.
Okay, so that we don't know how tall it's going to block any of the lighting or block any noise when they're first installed, whether they'll be doing anything to help mitigate the noise or light at that point?
So the lighting, regardless of the tree height, will still have to be at zero-foot candles? The plants and shrubbery are an additional enhancement to further screen project from the residences.
Okay, so no matter how tall the trees are at, there will be no extra lighting into the backyards?
That is correct.
Excuse me, can we take a break, refocus? Chair?
This time, we'll take a break, reset. Thank you. Reconvene the meeting? Thank you. And we'll give Commissioner King where we left off. Commissioner King will ask his questions to staff.
Trying to find out where I was again. In reading the report stuff leading up to this, there is going to be a noise analysis done before the facility opens, correct?
That's correct. I'd like to just rewind just a quick second. And I got some further information about the trees. So the trees will be installed at a 24-inch box. That's a larger box size than standard. They will arrive to the site at 10 to 12 feet in height. And if they're planted correctly, which they will be because they'll be checked by our landscape architect, they'll grow at a rate of three feet per year. Y'all have to forgive me, I was dual-thinking and I forgot about the question. I apologize. I'll write it down.
And Commissioner King, I think the question was, will there be a noise analysis prior to installation or occupancy of the car wash? I believe that was the question.
Yes. So the project is conditioned that at the time of completion of the car wash itself, they have to do a noise study to verify that the level of noise generated by the car wash, including the 10-foot wall that's supposed to be pushing sound out into the street and away from the residences, they'll have to demonstrate that they do in fact meet those decibels and fall within the city's noise limits. If that is not the case, then they're going to have to undertake a redesign of the project and install further noise baffling or noise mitigation measures or noise design features to bring the project into compliance.
Okay. Another question with that, the landscaping on the south end, that 18 to 22-foot buffer of landscaping, is there anything around that preventing people from going inside that landscaped area? I mean, 18 feet is a pretty big area that people can go in and hang out and hide out and do all sorts of nefarious things. And I've seen it plenty of times in other 24-hour gas station facilities where people will go in and they'll get whatever they get and then go hang out at the area. And this is a perfect area for them to be kind of away from prying eyes right up against people's backyards.
Understood. So a part of the project design is in fact to have that landscape buffer. But you'll notice, if we could bring up my original presentation, you notice as we look at the site plan itself, there's an existing block wall that separates this project from the residences. And here it is. So the outline in black is a representation of where the wall is right now. So there's a wall there and then there will be trees planted in front of the wall. And then in front of those trees will have open area from the street and from all areas on the site to view inward. So there is an opportunity for someone to walk in there and under the trees, but there will be, at no point will they be invisible because they'll be seen at eye level looking into the project site. So there won't be anything to hide them if they are in the trees.
Other than the trees themselves?
Other than the trees themselves.
Okay. And then just to clarify with the eliminating the vacuums, there's no vacuums at all? They've completely taken out?
Yes, I don't think I mentioned that in the discussion, but the original proposal had a larger-scale car wash in mind. And we were appreciative to work together to eliminate that aspect.
And the car wash is only in operation from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM? It's not a 24-hour thing as well as the store?
Correct. We thought carefully about the hours and we thought that it would be best to be consistent with the car wash hours that the planning commission has been reviewing up until this point, which is 7 to 7.
All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a couple of questions to ask. I think you did a great presentation on the underground tanks. I had some concern on that and whether we did the environmental study and SEQA studies that are needed for that. And the double wall is a very good feature of it. The sale of alcohol is regulated by ABC. Do they give the license to the facility for the sale of alcohol beverage? They have to apply and then the ABC will then give the license to them? So it could be open without beer and alcohol or beer and wine?
The state of California, ABC, is the ultimate authority in approving a permit for alcohol. But the ABC works with cities and counties for local preferences. And our ABC in Riverside, we work intimately with them. You know that we have additional requirements above and beyond what the state allows or what the state requires. So they contact us to let us know the proposal that is taking place. We let them know what our additional requirements are. And in this particular case, ABC let us know that we needed to make findings of public convenience or necessity, which we have made in the findings of the staff report.
And this store, convenience store, is a Circle K? Is that correct?
It could be. That was noted on the elevations, but that's not something that we condition or require. But that's what is proposed, correct?
What is proposed is a Circle K?
Yeah, it could be a Circle K. It could be any other type of convenience store. But that's currently what's proposed, yes.
But there's nothing in the conditions of approval of to exactly who will be on the sign at the top of the building?
There are conditions to apply for a sign permit and have sign review. But if the property owner chose to go with a different operator, say, Mobil, for example, you know, that could be switched out.
Okay.
But the use itself is what we are looking at today, which is the convenience store field sales.
And Chair Fisher, just for the record, we always entail these as for the permatee. And we don't tie it specifically to use. Usually what we see is the folks that process the application are the end users. There can be times where these entitlements are sold and a different company would come in. But they would have to have the same standards, the same design, the exact same footprint. If they were to exceed what was analyzed, they'd have to come back in and process a new, or an amended application with us. But we do issue these to a permatee, just for the record.
This started, as I think I, Ms. Kelly talked, that this started in 2018. And then I have a date of October 2019. Can you clarify that for me a little bit?
Yeah, so we had a pre-application in 2018, which is not a formal application. It's sort of a, here we have a proposal we're considering. And following that pre-application, they submitted a formal application in 2019.
So the formal application was October 2019?
The formal application was mid-2019. Let's say, March to May. And we had a community meeting in October. So shortly after receiving the application, we felt it was important to involve the community.
So the community meeting took place in October of 2019?
That is correct.
What community meeting has taken place since then?
Well, we have, so since the community meeting, we had names and email addresses of those that attended. So those that provided their email address, we maintained communication with them regarding various updates that we had with the project. There were only a few updates since the community meeting. We met with them, we heard their concerns. We immediately followed up with the applicant and wanted to engage in further discussion as a result of that meeting. And so it took a period of time to work out these issues. And during that time, we did receive inquiries from the public, particularly from those that attended the meeting, wanting to know what the status of the project was and if they were going to propose something different. I recall replying to- Um, I recall, uh, replying to at least one particular resident, letting them know that we were still working on the project, that, um, as planning staff, we don't have the authority to decide what specific use will go in that location, but that we would be reviewing it based on the standards and taking into consideration their concerns to try and come up with something that is better suited than what was originally proposed.
So if I am a new resident from October twenty nineteen to today, how would I know what this project is and did I have any ability to give input?
Okay. Thank you for asking. So before we had the public hearing, as part of the process, we, um, provide notice of this public hearing and we do it in three different methods. First method, method is a notice in the newspaper to publish that this is going to be occurring. The second type of notice is a direct mailing to the listed property owners within three hundred feet of the boundary of the site. And the third type of notice that we do is we place a posted sign on the location of the site, letting people know, um, what is occurring. Uh, additionally, before that noticing went out, um, the emails that I did have, I sent, um, those folks an advanced copy of the notice and, uh, the landscape plan.
When these trees are planted and the eighteen-foot buffer, is the eighteen-foot buffer, are those trees, bushes, uh, is it stone wall, cement wall, block wall?
So the, the eighteen-foot buffer is a combination of trees and shrubbery. I think the critical thing to note for the trees is that these are required to be evergreen trees. So they have to be, they have to have foliage year round. This is not gonna be a scenario where in the wintertime, this, uh, the, the greenery goes away. So these are, um, evergreen trees that are, um, have foliage year round in combination with the, uh, shrubs that are proposed that grow to about ten feet in height and six feet in width. I think they're called honey bush.
And I know that the trees, when they're first planted, are not at the height that is designated in the plans. Uh, usually it takes two to three years for them to mature? Would that be a correct statement?
They, they grow, uh, at a rate of three feet per year. And so these particular trees will be uh, of a, a installation box size of twenty-four inches. Their immediate installed height will be ten to twelve feet in height. And, uh, as I stated earlier, the, the trees, once they're in the ground and being watered, they'll start growing at a rate of three feet per year.
So that's approximately two years. Alright, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I think you've done a, a good job, uh, making, uh, the presentation. Uh, the staff always does its homework and I appreciate the other two people who made the presentation. Uh, at this point in time, I, I would like to, uh, I would like to open the public hearing at six fifty-five PM. Each applicant will be limited to a fifteen-minute, oh, sorry, excuse me, they've already, we've already had the applicants. I'm sorry, sorry. See what it does when you have to sit in for somebody you don't know, you know, you're just, no, I'm, I'm, it's a three-minute, uh, presentation that you have, uh, timeframe. Uh, one thing I wanna caution everyone on who might be wanting to speak is you have the three minutes, but redundancy sometimes can take a long, long time. And just answering the same question that's going on and on and on, uh, let, let's try to avoid some redundancy if we can, uh, in our general comments. Uh, I would appreciate that. And we'll take testimony in this order, uh, the proponents. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments, uh, starting, uh, with proponents?
Seeing none, just opponents.
Pardon me, madam?
We only have opponents?
Okay, alright. So we only have opponents, then there's nothing neutral either?
None.
Okay. So the opponent, the opponents, uh, and who would be the first one to speak?
We'll start with Fabio Santa Maria.
Okay. And remember three minutes? And don't be afraid if I have to cut you off, but sometimes that has to be done.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Fabio Santa Maria. I'm a local real estate agent and I happen to live right behind the proposed construction on the southwest corner of Clinton Keith and Alvin Road, behind my backyard. Um, on a Wednesday evening like this, um, our neighborhood is usually calm as most days in the year and we like to have the kids play outside, leave the windows open and get some fresh air, enjoy our homes, pools and our backyards. Um, however, just two days ago, me and my neighbors came to find out that the applicant, Karaki Western States, is proposing to construct a twenty-four hour convenience store, car wash and a six-island fueling station with street, three storage tanks. And so now you might ask, what has that to do and how does that affect the value of our properties? Well, let me ask you this question to the members here. Would you like to purchase a home for you and your family with a gas station, car wash and convenience store only a few hundred meters from, a feet, sorry, from your backyard? I don't think so. Uh, would you be okay to keep your windows shut for the rest of life so toxic fumes don't enter your homes and rooms where you and your family sleep and spend most of the time? I also don't think so. And then let alone the noise of the car wash, the constant traffic and fuel tanks that are being refilled day in and day out. And just to remind you, our backyards, they have a hill. So when you go up that hill, that's when the gas station and the pipes, uh, the pumps are gonna be put at and the tanks will go right underneath, which will mean that's gonna be right in front of our eyes through the hills of our backyard. Um, nobody talks about that either, so, which would make any potential buyer or homeowner in our case worry and think of a leak, a health hazard, a cause of fire, or even worse, an explosion. It is also proven to attract crime as well, as we found out, which is one of the most important aspects of property value, especially in our beautiful Murrieta Oaks neighborhood, which is known for its low crime rate and safety. And just to imagine that, for example, you bought a home in the last two years and you were able to see your val- value of your home rise and all of a sudden with the decision to build a gas station right behind your backyard, and if you could just visualize that, because I can, I'm right behind it, uh, your home value starts to decline, there's no question. Now on top of it, if you have a hard time selling your home, guess what? You have to disclose the gas station and its toxic fumes and you see the value decline even more, causing you to lower your price and now your payoff amount sometimes is probably gonna be even higher than the value of your home. So you basically lost everything. We will have neighbors that lived there for decades or since the beginning of actually the whole neighborhood contemplating to leave, move, or even rent out their homes because selling them is impossible. And the domino effect that will actually be a whole cancer to this community. Um, and this is why we're all here today, to fight not only for our homes and its value, but for the wealth and health and well-being of our community, which is being put in grave danger and-
I have to, I have to call a halt to your presentation.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Please, there's no clapping. When a speaker speaks, uh, you can raise your hands and thumbs up, but please do not do any clapping. Our second speaker?
Robert Blackman.
I just noticed with all the pictures, you didn't actually see how close the houses are to the back of that gas station. Fifty-five feet from the gas tanks to our backyards. Fifty-five feet. My name is Robert Blackman and I live with my beautiful wife, two gorgeous children and my two pretty okay in-laws at two seven six two-two Hackberry Street. Our houses are directly across the street from those houses, which if this plan goes forward, will have gas stations in their backyard, quite literally. Houses where kids play in backyards, swim in pools, houses where families sleep, eat and live. And by the way, one of those houses is even a licensed daycare facility. But I thought I would start with a simple exhibit. I went online and just using Google Maps, looked throughout Riverside County, looked at Lake Elsinore, Temecula, Murrieta, Wildomar, Hemet, even Paris. And I challenge you to do the same. Find an example of a gas station this close to residential property. Or don't waste your time, because you won't. I spent three hours. I didn't find a single house anywhere close to gas station, a gas station like this proposed project. My question is, why is that? Why has that never happened before? Is it just chance? Coincidence, happenstance, or maybe those planning commissions realize how absolutely idiotic it would be to approve a gas station with pumps fifty-five feet from our backyards? Fifty-five feet from our backyards. I mean, I realize it's California. Regulations are there, they're doing their best. I don't care. Fifty-five feet with storm runoff, with everything else, that's just, it's, it's inconscionable. I just, I can't believe it's even a question, quite frankly. So we have, we're doing our due diligence. We've already approached Circle K. We'll make sure they know about this project and how upset we are about it. We've already approached the press enterprise. We're on Facebook, we have a website. I highly recommend you check out poisonmurrieta.com, which we will be driving on media too. And we will be fighting this. We are asking for the continuance. And if the vote doesn't go the way we want, we will be going to the city council. We've already taken the collection for the thousand dollars of that. And we will be fighting this to, to the very end. This is not gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. No clapping, please? Please no-
Sana Daniels?
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Um, my name is Sana Daniels and, um, I, uh, I, my property actually backs up right against the proposed, um, construction. Um, and obviously I'm concerned because, um, on the other side of it is a swimming pool. Uh, we have a pool and, um, we have two grandkids that are constantly at our house swimming and, um, with, you know, the potential for a gas station and all the risks, the health issues and all that stuff are really concerned. And as you can see, um, and then also in the previous, in, in the past, you know, when we had teenagers living at the home, our son used to just jump across the re- oh, sorry, to go to the Jack in the Box that's across the street. So we've been there since two thousand nine. We're not opposed to construction, but obviously a gas station is an issue for us. And, um, previously in the past, like I said, when they, when they opened up that Jack in the Box, we can hear the orders from a bedroom window. Okay, you see how close that is to my bedroom window? And we can also on Saturday morning hear the telephone ringing on, at Mountain View Tires? Because we asked and they said they have to turn it up loud because they can't hear their phone sometimes, so. And this proposal will be right on the other side of our retaining wall. So I'm obviously concerned, um, you know, a lot of our neighbors all as well. So I'm asking you that, you know, please consider this. I, it's, as, you know, fathers, as grandfathers, some of you may be, I, I'm sure you're concerned about, you know, what this could potentially do to our kids. And, um, one of the studies, I know the builders, uh, talked about a lot of the studies that they brought, but one of the study that I didn't hear about was the, the fact of a gas station right next to people's homes. So in this case, just on the other side of the retaining wall. And then also, you know, it's a corporate responsibility, um, I would hope that, you know, that you would look at the human side of this and how this could potentially impact us versus just the profits. So I understand, I'm not opposed to development, but does not make sense to put a gas station. And I would imagine that none of you probably have a gas station right on the other side of your retaining wall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker?
Sky DeBruer.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, thank you. Uh, my husband and I and our five children live on Hackberry Street. Um, the car wash will be directly behind our retaining wall. Um, so I wanted to talk about the safety and I know a lot of the issues were addressed, um, that were a concern of ours. Now, we just moved in April into our home. We had no idea this was happening until Monday. Um, but my concern is the safety of our children and all the children that live on that street. So is it truly safe to live near a gas station? Um, the number one compound that is a concern is benzene. That is a, a compound that's in all gas, gasoline, and it is a known carcinogen. And it, um, causes cancer. It, there is no safe levels of benzene. Um, adverse health effects of benzene include nausea, cancer, anemia, increased susceptibility to infections and low birth weight. According to the World Health Organization Guidelines for Indoor Air Quality, there is no safe level. So there's fault, there's lots of research that's out there. So I know that they've done their safety things, but I don't think they've looked at all the research about benzene and the adverse health effects. There are multiple studies listed on the National Institute of Health. In particular, in two thousand five, the California Air Resources Board, as the gentleman spoke about, became the first in the US to recommend a minimum public health safety zone between new gas stations and sensitive land uses. The recommended, recommendation appeared in Air Quality and Land Use Handbook. The pre-two thousand five studies referenced above and other research prompted the board to recommend a minimum of three hundred feet of separation between a gas station, fueling sta- spot and a home where people live. And also schools, daycare centers, and we have a daycare center on our street, playgrounds and medical facilities. We have an elementary school that will be, that, that is within a thousand feet of this. And it's recommended that gas stations be put beyond the thousand feet. Um, can you honestly, in good faith, approve a gas station so close to growing, developing children and expose them to the harmful effects of a cancer-causing agent? This causes childhood leukemia and we know that. You can look it up. Please do your research. We have five children. Can you honestly look them in the eyes and tell them that you approve this? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Christine LeBrego?
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Honorable Chairman and people of the city council. Thank you for allowing me to express my concerns on this development project. My name is Christine LeBrego and I have lived in this community since nineteen ninety-seven. I grew up here. I spent my early elementary years, uh, in the school directly behind this building. Uh, I graduated from Vista Murrieta High School and currently, uh, live with my parents, uh, and representing them as they are the owners of one of the, uh, houses directly behind the project we are discussing today. Um, I would like to utilize my time to explain more on safety concerns that I and many of our neighbors, uh, have on this proposed plan, uh, uh, on this lot. A gasoline station and convenience store that could potentially operate, uh, twenty-four- hours a day possesses many potential unsavory scenarios that could plague our neighborhood. Safety is the reason why our family and many families moved to Marietta. There was a study in 2020 that showed statistics correlating violent crimes and their locations. Convenience stores accounted for about three percent of those violent crimes all over, overall 2020, and gasoline stations accounted for two percent. These statistics make convenience stores and gasoline stations the fourth and seventh most common locations for violent crime respectively. Living in this neighborhood for a long time, I remember incidents on businesses like the Arco and the Juiced Up where there was several robberies at gunpoint, not a gasoline station, but very near, close by. Imagining that right behind our building, right behind our home is inconceivable. We have an elementary school that I'm sure you're aware of that is point three miles from the proposed gasoline station. Children who walk to both Antelope Hills Elementary and Vista Maria High School would have that exposure that was talked about earlier. The safety of our families is the top priority for those living in the city. This project would add a heightened sense of anxiety for those living in the direct vicinity, not just including my family. Never did it occur to our families that we would have to potentially face such an incredibly worrying situation. I pose these questions for you to keep in mind while you make your decision. Would you feel safe with a gasoline station behind your home? Would you allow your children and grandchildren to play in said backyard, knowing there is only a seven-foot wall behind them and a gas tank? Do you really care about our safety and of our neighborhood, of our families, of our children? I know you do. You took an oath to represent the city and bring about change for the good of this community. We, the people who live here, are telling you we feel unsafe. We do not want this product. We need you to hear us. Please consider us. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Doug DeBrower.
Good evening, everybody.
John? Good evening, welcome.
Chief. I'm going to do the best I can to kind of put this together at the last minute. But we moved into our house on Hackberry Street several months ago. We were not aware of this project. Had we been aware of this project, we probably definitely would not have bought that house. So I'm also a firefighter. Where I work, we have a 7-Eleven gas station right next to one of our stations, as well as several other Circle K and AMPM stores throughout our district. I'm well aware of the hazards and also well aware of the shenanigans that happen at these locations late at night. And on one respect, they're beneficial and helpful to our community. But on the other hand, and on the other token, they are unattractive, kind of like flies to dog poop. In the, if I can quote a movie from the eighties, Field of Dreams, "If you build it, they will come." Back in 2019, October 2019, it sounds like there was a meeting and some concerns were arose at this meeting, some very valid concerns from the residents and the people. And from, it sounds like the concerns that were raised at that meeting, the project should have been scrapped back then. Changes were made. It sounds like there was a lot of changes that were made to the plan to try to address some of those concerns. But I think the problem is, is that residents weren't trying to say that we don't want changes made. Residents were trying to say, we don't want this here at all. The community's concerns were ignored. With the changes that were made, it's almost from sitting here looking at it tonight and just being a secondhand observer because I didn't know this was going in, kind of learning about this now, it almost seems like trying to fit a round peg into a square hole. And looking at the size of the site and the location and how many other locations are available throughout, throughout the area, I'm curious how many other sites were looked at and this was determined to be the best one? It seems like the only person who really benefits from this business is the applicant on the backs and at the expense of the residents and the community. So, you know, it doesn't really matter what systems you have to monitor and sense for environmental concerns, the hazard's still there. Public safety measures are only effective until they aren't. The nature of this business attracts nuisance behavior, you know, it's like I said from my movie quote, "If you build it, they will come." You know, it doesn't matter what deterrents you put in there, it's still, it is what it is. And we really don't want it in our backyards, right on the other side of the fence, and I'm sure you wouldn't either. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Donald Roberts.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Good meeting, good afternoon, good evening. Thank you. My name is Donald Roberts, and I reside at twenty-seven six thirty-two Dogwood Street. That is in the neighborhood of Marietta Oaks. I actually purchased my property there when the development was first completed back in 2005, so I've been there ever since this particular development was opened up. And at that particular time, when I looked at real estate in the area, one thing that I was so pleased with was the green space, the balance of residential, the balance of retail, and then the balance of green space that was very prevalent in Marietta. And what really shocked me was back in 2018 or 2019, when we first became aware of this, I remember the evening that we all spent here in the other conference room when we talked about the idea of this particular project. A lot of our questions were why we understood that this particular piece of real estate was available for purchase. We understood that. And investors should have the opportunity to purchase real estate. We completely understand that. Our question was really more around, how could this particular piece of real estate be zoned as commercial with its adjacency to the property line of this particular development? That was something that we were puzzled over. The one advantage that I had is that because I had been a resident from the very beginning, I actually checked some of the planning and zoning maps. And back at that time, these particular areas that are now in question were not zoned as commercial. There were, there was a park that was planned, and there were other green spaces that were going to be preserved. So between now, between then and now, obviously, our city has grown, we've looked for more services to be able to serve us, and we've made some changes. And that's fine. But this particular type of change is questionable. To be able to take a piece of land that is that close to the backyards of residences, that is that close to a wonderful elementary school, that's that close to other residences that are multi-story, we have wonderful apartments, we have wonderful mixed-use residential in this area. And we definitely want to have these types of services. But this particular project is so close to our homes. It's not that we don't appreciate projects like this, it's just that this particular one is so close to our homes that we believe that it will do more harm than good for our community. Again, as a developer, as a builder, I can appreciate this.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
There are no more public comments. No more public comments.
A rebut? Developer? That's what I thought. This time, I would like to represent. Have any rebuttal after hearing some of the public comments? And your presentation would be limited to fifteen minutes and a ten-minute rebuttal.
Okay. Terrific, thank you. Thank you very much. I will, I will make a couple of comments and then I know that Kelly Black will have some additional comments there. Certainly, the information that was, or the comments that were presented to you this evening were, were very much in line with the comments, you know, from 2019 about, you know, the project and just not wanting it at all. The applicant purchased the property with its existing zoning with the general plan there. Not sure the history of that, but, you know, the general plan and the zoning do have meaning. They have intent in terms of what is to be developed there. And the applicant purchased this property. There's been no zone change since. They did their due diligence and researched what is allowed under the general plan and the zoning code. It clearly states that a gas station is a by right. We do have to make sure that we meet things like setbacks and parking requirements and things along those lines, but provided that we can meet the code requirements for those, it's absolutely a permitted use. The request this evening is to, for the car wash and then the additional products at the, at the convenience store. And while I certainly appreciate, and I'm a father of four, I raised all of my children here in Marietta. We actually lived, our house backed up to kind of a busy street, so I can certainly appreciate sometimes, you know, being awakened at night by loud vehicles and everything. And we're certainly not here to try to make anybody's life more difficult. We have gone through extensive modifications, the tree lines there, so that nobody is looking at the facility, so that there is no lights that are going to be there. And, and those trees are going to be there, you know, in perpetuity to provide a screening. I've seen many, many homes that back up to commercial developments, and there are big tree lines there. And they're all over the place. Lots of people have their properties where they've tree lined them because they, you know, they want the privacy for whatever reason. I had a big tree line right next to my neighbor. Loved my neighbor, he was a great guy. I just, you know, he didn't want to see me, I didn't want to see him. But they're very effective at doing that. And, well, we certainly appreciate, you know, the comments and the concerns. You know, we did work very closely with your staff to do, bring forward to you the very best project that we could that took into consideration those factors. Yes, we did know that there was certainly an overriding opinion that they wanted nothing there, but, you know, our applicant went ahead and purchased property, you know, based on what the zoning and the general plan was at the time, and had nothing to do with how the general plan got there or the zoning. And we do have a zoning code, and I think that our project does meet all of those and that we do have findings for approval, and that we have done an adequate job of mitigating all of the, you know, nuisance, nuisance activity or, or the sound noise, you know, the noise, the lights, and so on and so forth. So, you know, I don't have any specific comments to any of the, you know, rebuttal to any of the, any of the particular comments. I do appreciate it, and I certainly understand all of them, but in our situation, I believe that the, you know, again, our project has demonstrated the absolute best that could be done with this type of use, which is a, which is a use that is called for in the general plan and in the zoning. Kelly, would you like to add something to that?
Thank you. You'll be limited.
Thank you, Chairman Fisher, and thank you again for hearing me. A couple of other comments. It was interesting, way back, the project was submitted, and then we had a little thing called COVID, which did slow down processing. But I distinctly recall during the processing time period, Mr. Ramaya asking me a question about the location and whether there are similar uses on similar locations adjacent to residential. And I said, there are two that immediately come to mind on the Seventy-Nine South. One is an Arco station, which has been there for a while, and it's adjacent to, I believe, apartments. The other is a brand-new Union Seventy-Six station that's at the corner of Pachanga Parkway and the Seventy-Nine South, which was being constructed. I also know that there are two right near my house. I live in Escondido. There are two on El Norte Parkway. There is a large Shell station that includes both car service, car wash, and a convenience store that is directly adjacent to a senior community. And there is a Arco Circle K directly adjacent to an apartment community. Both of those are on El Norte Parkway, prior to Center City. In regards to the benzene concern, benzene is part of a larger class of gases that was studied in our health resource assessment, and I would invite forward Mike, who did that study, to talk about that. Thank you.
Yep. Three minutes there. Ten minutes, okay. Mike Dickerson, eleven ninety-seven South Los Angeles Avenue, Simi Valley, California, principal of MD Acoustics. We do air quality noise studies. We've worked for the last seventeen years doing various studies, pretty much in Southern California, Northern California, and almost all of the Western United States. As it relates to this, the benzene's South Coast Air Quality Management District actually has a lookup table that allows individuals to kind of look up throughput of gallons and what that would quantify for the, pretty much for the cancer risk, which is what we're really getting down to on brass tacks. And if, based on our assumptions on the throughput for this site, it's approximately sixty-three hundred gallons per day is what would be estimated, whether that's, and if you look at the lookup tables, it's basically falls below the ten-in-one-million cancer risk, which falls under with benzene as being part of that. So when you do a health risk study, it looks at all these, the cancer risk associated with these chemicals. And so on the lookup tables, it's showing that it does not exceed the cancer risk based on the minimum setback of fifty, fifty feet with that underground storage tanks.
Michael, just interrupted you, you have approximately two minutes.
Okay, that's fine. And basically, yeah, that's to answer or discuss that. I know that here in Marietta, we've worked on several other, like 7-Elevens, same thing that are within fifty feet to a hundred feet of residences in terms of gas stations as well.
That it, Michael? Thank you. What I'd like to do now is bring it back up to the commissioners for deliberation and their questions or concerns. Commissioner Lavelle?
These are questions to staff or to, we can do applicant as well?
Yeah, if you have questions for the applicant or staff related to this before you enter into deliberation or consider any motions.
Motions now or later?
No, if you're, I guess it would depend on what that proposed motion might be, but if you still have questions of staff as part of the public hearing, for the record, I would ask them now.
Okay. Just to clarify, I can ask my questions and then make a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. Mister, no?
Okay. You can always make a motion. I don't know what that motion might be, so it's hard to say whether or not it would be allowable at that time or not, but.
Okay.
In, in general, before we proceed, maybe I can lay out some of the options for you this evening, because I think there are probably several that different, that the commission might want to consider, and that might affect your timing on how you handle that. Is that something you'd like to?
Yes.
Me to go through? So. I would, no, not yet, because that depends on what direction we go in here. So the options before you tonight are obviously, as traditionally would be, you can approve the recommended actions as they're laid out. You can approve in part and deny in part. For example, you could consider approving the development permit but denying the CUP or a modification of that. If you were considering a denial of any part of this, we would ask that you give direction to staff so that we can bring that back at the next hearing with the appropriate findings, so that the appropriate resolution is before you to make, to take that action. You could consider denying all parts of it, and the same thing would be true. We'd ask for direction from staff to bring that back. Or you could continue this, the public hearing to another date certain, at which point you could either close the public testimony today and just continue it and bring it back for deliberation, or you can keep the public hearing open and accept additional testimony at the next continued date. at the next continued date. And I think those are your available options. I'm hoping I didn't miss one, but those options may dictate how you want to proceed at this point.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to continue this for the next regular planning commission meeting in two weeks. I believe that's the 26th. So.
So to clarify, would your motion be to keep public testimony open and continue it? Because we wouldn't be closing public testimony until after you had asked all your questions.
I'd like to ask my questions first, so I'll wait. Sorry. Okay. I have a couple, just before I make that motion again. Mr. Ramaya, the benzene topic, is that included as a specific item in the staff report? Is it called out? Is it talked about?
We have included the health risks assessment as an attachment to the initial study. That is part of the notice of exemption reliance. I believe we have included that into the record.
Okay.
And if I, I may add, just real quickly, benzene is part of a class of volatile organic compounds, so it's, it's in, there's a number of VOCs, of which benzene is one of them. And those VOCs are covered in the health risk assessment that you already identified.
Okay. And then, I guess, to the, the comment about a daycare being close by, I was just curious if that daycare is a permitted daycare with the city light, business license, does that, does that prohibit at all the type of use or type of development that would go in for a lot such as this? Are there any restrictions after there's already a operating, either school, daycare, hospital, et cetera, that would limit those types of things?
Sure. I guess we could, we would look at a daycare as a, defined as like a sensitive receptor, which would include schools, things like that. But in terms of distance separation or compatibility, with daycares, we do track the location of them, just so that there isn't an over-concentration in any one residential neighborhood. But beyond that, there wouldn't, there is not a distance requirement separation between a daycare and a use such as a fuel station or a car wash.
That's all I got right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavelle? Commissioner King?
One of the questions that was brought up during the public testimony regarding the hill, and can you talk about the grading plan? Is there, the hill that's behind these houses, is it going to be taken down and the grading brought to be level with these houses, or will this project sit up above the backyards of the houses?
So the project right now has kind of a rolling terrain, and I guess at the intersection of Marietta Oaks and Clinton Keith, it's at its lowest point, and as we travel eastward towards the freeway, it gets a little higher. Now, when they go to construct the project, they're going to balance the site out and more or less level it for a flat pad. And the, the site is already situated above the homes, so it will maintain its current sighting. It'll just be that the land will be flatter. So I guess it won't be as high as the current baseline is now.
And then another question was brought up about this type of development, gas station being right next to residential. Are there any developments like that in city Marietta?
I looked in, that was a question often raised, and it got me thinking, so I did look throughout the city, and there isn't a exact situation like this particular proposal in the city. But as the applicant alluded to, there are other areas where this does occur.
And just to add to that, Commissioner King, the commission did listen to the Beyond Food Mart proposal, and I believe that that was 80 feet from the edge of the fence wall from the adjacent neighborhood to the canopy. So we have seen a similar distance.
That's all the questions I have.
Commissioner King? I have a question. Could this project be done without the inclusion of a gas station?
Well, we'd, I guess we'd have to ask the applicant what their preference was, but in terms of our review of any proposal, a car wash without a convenience store would certain, could certainly be proposed, and without no convenience store or fuel station, yes.
I am concerned by some of the residents' comments about this being, as Commissioner King brought up, near the childcare facility, the daycare facility, and the school. Is it, is it 1,000 feet from the school at least?
So in terms of review, and like I mentioned earlier, we'll call them sensitive receptors or the school, we do have a distance requirement for alcohol sales, and so I immediately looked into that. And there is a distance buffer of 600 feet from the project site to any school or sensitive receptor. I'm sorry, it's not, just from schools. And the project site is beyond the 600-feet boundary, so it's well within the distance buffer to allow alcohol sales in proximity to the school.
This is a difficult one for me. So I am going to look at the possibility of a continuance myself, but I'll ask, I'll close the public hearing as of 7:39 PM. And I'll call for a motion if there is no other comments that need to be made by the commissioners.
I could make that motion, motion to be to continue this meeting to October 26 for the reasons of the two letters we received, and to hopefully have all members present on the dais.
You second that motion? Madam Chairman, can we take a roll call vote?
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Lavelle?
Aye.
Chair Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 3-0.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, and we did the recall. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's continue on with city planner comments.
For the members of the public, the commission has requested this to be moved to the 10/26 Planning Commission hearing, which is in two weeks. Back to you, Chair.
Will the, I want to ask a question.
Oh, yeah.
Will the other members that are absent from this meeting, the commissioners, can they be brought up to speed on what was conducted tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll present a same PowerPoint, if you will, and we'll walk all the commissioners back through this proposal.
Okay. Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing. Thank you.
Planning Commission comments?
Just want to thank everyone for their patience as we walk through this very delicate matter. Thank you.
I want to thank our planning department for their exceptional work in trying to get this proposal to a point where it is explainable, as they have done. They're very good at what they do, and I appreciate it. I appreciate the two speakers that spoke with regard to the development, and I am appreciative of the residents. This is a difficult one, and I understand your concerns. So that's why we're going to make a, make it continuance to the next meeting, so that more thought process can be determined, and brought our other two commissioners into the loop. So I thank you all very much. And if there are no further business, can I ask for a consensus to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Meeting is closed at 7:42 PM.